City County Planning Commission, please come to order. Jessica Fucavero.
Sir, Commissioner Rich.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Balance. Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld. Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert. Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Runner. Chair Houston.
Yes ma'am. Everyone's had a chance to go over the minutes from last meeting, December 5th. Do we have any corrections or anything?
Yes, we had one correction. It was noted to the clerk there. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction.
Second.
Commissioner Rich.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert. Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Houston.
Yes ma'am.
With all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket and the qualification for each of those witnesses, finally, I'd ask that you administer the oath.
Oh, swear to tell the truth. Thank you. You have a financial report in your packet. Do we have any questions on that? If not, we'll move on to preliminary subdivisions and site development plans. We have any questions there?
No.
Letters of credits and performance bonds. Renew letter of credit for construction on Hardcastle Estates Phase 1, amount of $43,000 from H&amp;A Development LLC. Renew letter of credit for construction as TAS Trucking in the amount of $66,000 from Tahar Zookic. Renew letter of credit in construction of Harvest Landing Phase 2, amount $48,000 from Robert Neely. Renew letter of credit in construction from Burr Oaks, amount of $51,000 from Fairview Avenue Properties. Convert the letter of credit and bond in construction of Plano Estates, amount of $10,000 from Mark Douglas Construction. Renew letter of credit, North Ridge Subdivision Section 10, in the amount of $126,000 from Jay Allen Builders. Release letter of credit for Autumn Grove Subdivision, in the amount of $75,180 and replace it with performance bond, in the amount of $75,000 from Southside Development LLC. Reduce performance bond for construction on Upton Farms, Phase 1, $422,000 to $134,800 from Jody Allen. Renew letter of credit for construction for Poplar Grove, Section 2, in the amount of $65,600 from Burr and Jones LLC. And reduce and renew the letter of credit in construction for Traditions, Section 3, for $185,700 to $37,140 for Vision Builders. Do we have any questions on those? Then I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move. Second.
Commissioner Rich.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert. Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Ma'am.
Chair Houston.
Yes ma'am. We have no old business, so we'll move into the public hearings. 2019-50Z County, Mary Susan Waldemer has filed an application of Arizona tract of land containing approximately 1.492 acres located at 375 Coleman Lane, from agriculture to RE residential estate with a general development plan.
Thank you Chair Houston. We had a pre-application conference on November 13th for the property you see outlined here in yellow. That property is zoned agriculture, as Chair Houston has already stated. Its current use is single-family residential, and around there, it's pretty much all agriculture and single-family residential. And future land use is low-density there. So, give a little bit of background on this particular case, and you'll see this here in your summary request on your staff report. The 1.492 acres that you're considering this evening to rezone from agriculture to residential estate was already transferred by deed to the applicant before a proper plat was recorded. So this current lot size is not permitted in the agriculture zoning districts, and it's less than five acres. If the application is approved, the property would be in compliance with the zoning ordinance based on its current lot size, and a proper plat subdividing the property could be recorded, reflecting the current deeds on record at the courthouse. So, moving on to the rest of the staff report, agriculture is the original zoning of the property. The property is designated as low-density residential on the flume, which the RE zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in that category, and may be appropriate if this body determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. Below that, I'll draw your attention to the compatibility with surrounding development. There are several mature trees located on the property, and there's a sinkhole occupying the majority of the property. Going on to page two, I will point out a couple things in the site characteristics review. The first, under the transportation infrastructure, you'll see that the property has frontage on Coleman Lane, which is a 12-foot wide roadway, which is less than what the current standards are for county roads. You'll also see it under prime farmland, that the property contains a soil type classified as farmland of statewide importance, and the property contains soil types that are classified as very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. I'm always afraid I'm going to mess that up every time, so... Below that, site design and compatibility review, just to kind of give you an idea of the area, the surrounding architectural features, the majority of the residents in the area are one-story. Most of the homes in the area are constructed of vinyl. The applicant did not address building materials for the proposed residence that is currently under construction. The applicant may have additional information about this, but the proposed residence currently under construction does not face Coleman Lane. She may have something to add about that, since the last time that she and I spoke, or that she spoke with staff. I'll go on to the development plan conditions. There are two. Number one, the existing driveway location will be used to access the property, and number two, the lot will be approved for onsite septic system by the Barron River Health Department. Moving on to the Focus 2030 category review, there were 17 items that staff evaluated. Seven of those items were determined that should be up to the planning commission, and five of them did not comply. LU113 deals with compatibility, which is up to the planning commission. LU2, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Proposal does not comply with LU214, PR17, and NCR116, as the applicant did not address the existing trees located on the property. Proposal does not comply with NCR11 or NCR13, as the applicant did not address the existing sinkhole located on the property. Planning commission should determine compliance with NCR241, which deals with increased development pressure on the countryside, specifically relating to that roadway that's less than the 18-foot minimum standard for county roads. Proposal may comply with HN1 and HN13. This body should determine if the proposed development is a compatible infill project that preserves or enhances the character of the area. And the proposal may comply with HN21 and HN4. Planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residence is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So again, this property's already been transferred by deed. It was subdivided, or trying to subdivide, from a larger tract, which you can see there. I believe that the back portion of this property was deeded over to the neighbor there, to the north, and was added to their property, creating a larger agricultural tract. The building permit was issued for this property, since in agriculture, you can get a building permit, and the staff just did not know at the time that this had been transferred by deed, since no subdivision plat had been recorded. So that was how the building permit got issued, since there's nothing wrong with building a single-family home on ag property. Going to the points to consider on the front, the proposed development is consistent with the flume and low-density residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding road width, tree preservation, and the existing sinkhole that is located on the property. The proposed general development plan complies with some of the review criteria for site design, with exceptions noted relating to building materials and building orientation. And again, the applicant may have some more information on that. The proposal meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance, and compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. One more thing I will add, since that reminded me about the sinkhole. The applicant did come into the office last week. She was not aware there was a sinkhole on the property, and we discussed that, and from the looks of the plans, it looks like the home that is currently under construction is located out of that sinkhole. We just don't have a development plan condition committing to anything being outside the sinkhole. So, the applicant is here. She may have other information to add, and I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions, as am I, but that's all I have for the staff report.
Monica, I mean, they, with the deed transfer, they can go ahead and build whatever house they want?
The property, as far as we're concerned, with being zoned agriculture, even though it's less than, what is, the acreage is less than what's currently allowed, it was fine for anybody to build a house on there. So there was, you can build a single-family home on property zoned agriculture, don't need anything other than, you know, your building, your proper permits, but yeah, that was how they were able to get the permit, but this is just, this is all transferred by deed, but it's not legal, because it's not actually subdivided.
So are we just cleaning something up here?
This would essentially be a cleanup, that this subdivision would now match the deed, if you were inclined to approve this request, that would match the deed that's recorded, or that's at the courthouse.
Really? I mean, off the building?
That's up to you all. I mean, Ben...
So, help me with one other question here. You said that it's not, that anyone can get a permit, but wouldn't the assumption on the permit be made that both of those permits, if there's two houses on a single plat, they both belong to the same owner?
The, I'll go back to the, this may help a little bit. So, the property you see outlined in yellow, that and the properties to the north, those two neighbors have exchanged some land in the rear portion there. So those tracks are, this tract and the tract to the north are currently subdivided. They're currently two separate tracks, and I'll go to the next one, so you can kind of see a little farther out. They're two legal, non-conforming, legally non...
Descriptions.
What?
Two different legal descriptions.
Yeah, they're two, they're two different parcels of land. So this, this smaller tract that we're considering tonight, that portion of the property closer to Coleman Lane, outlined in red, that is what the applicant has had deeded to her, but every, like, so, in other words, the lot lines have been switched by deed, but they're not legally switched, because no subdivision has occurred. No, no recorded plat.
And did I understand you to say that the other tract, the one not in red, was added to a larger tract?
No, the rear portion of this, so the red, you see that, the little bit behind it, so this is, this is all still one tract legally. The portion behind, the outlined red portion, is, they're wanting to add that to the neighbor to the north. So the long skinny track next to this one, they're wanting to add that back acreage of this one to that one, making it a larger tract than what it currently is.
How far along has the house, has been started?
The applicant may be able to answer that. I'm not sure when that was begun.
Last question, the aerial view seems to indicate two structures. Is that accurate?
On this current, on this outlined in yellow here, there is another structure, I believe, a shed located on the property. The applicant has been informed that's not permitted to keep that shed in front of the, what you see, there's a mobile home. That mobile home's gone. That was removed, and yeah, it's gone. There's currently a shed located in front of the house. The applicant's aware that that can't stay in front of the house without a variance, but the mobile home there in the picture is not there, since this was taken back probably in March.
So, would you point for me? I just want to make sure I understand the difference between these two structures. One of them has a white roof, and one of them does not. The one that does not have a white roof, that is the mobile home?
The, the, I'm not sure exactly what the neighbor has, but the...
Roof's a mobile home.
Yeah, the one with, yes.
That's the mobile home?
That's no longer there.
Yeah, that's gone.
Okay.
That's separated on a separate... But what is the house facing? I couldn't tell what it was facing. It didn't look like it's facing the highway. It's kind of like an angle.
The applicant may want to address that. That was one thing that, that we had discussed, the orientation of the structure. As it was on the building permit, the front door was facing sideways, or not quite straight on with Coleman Lane, but she may have some additional information on that, as of tonight.
Should somebody have caught this before a building permit was given?
Ideally, yes. Ben may want to...
Ideally, yes, but all throughout the county, you have a lot of lots that are created by deed only. The requirement from KRS to actually have a plat to go along with transfer of land, I believe, come along sometime in the 70s, maybe late 70s. So, in theory, yes, but there was no plat to check, because it was transferred by deed. It was just simply taken down to the courthouse and recorded. I'm not sure how many, how long ago. It was recent, so, so they just checked, the deed was there, so the permit was issued.
Wouldn't it be designated if it, I'm speculating here, wouldn't it be designated as a non-buildable tract if it, so it doesn't get that designation?
Oh, no, because it's, if the, so, we don't necessarily review deeds through our office. We only review plats.
I see. And since there was no plat here...
We do look to see if there's a deed, when there's building permits done, and so there was in this case, and so, am I wrong?
I don't think we look for deeds.
No, okay, we don't look for deeds either.
But, we just go off what the plot plan shows, and so sometimes...
By a surveyor.
Sometimes, when property has been subdivided by deed historically, the surveyor, knowing that that legal description exists by deed, will show that on the plot plan for the home, so our plans reviewers will look at that, because that's what the surveyor's stamped and prepared, and that's all they have to go off of, so...
How did this come to the attention of the planning commission?
I think the preliminary plat was submitted after the permit was issued, right?
I'm not sure.
I, I think, and then that's when we realized that it needed to be rezoned, and I think, in speaking with the applicant, that's when we realized that it had already been transferred.
See.
So the property was surveyed, the deed was prepared, but there was never a plat? Breaking it down, correct? Right.
Is the applicant here? Some of the commissioners had some questions. Would you come up to the podium and let us where you're in? If you'll state your name and address.
Susan Waldemer, 375 Coleman Lane.
And you swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Could you tell us how...
Sorry?
You're already leaving? That's the property that you gave, or you...
All right, so what happened was, when I bought the property, I was intending to stay in the mobile home, until I built the house, but the mobile home turned out to be unlivable, so I moved across the street into the vacant mobile home, but I'm still using my address.
How far along is the house?
Unfortunately, I have already laid the foundation, and it was costly, and I've discovered, because I was informed quite a bit after I started, that I'm sitting on a sinkhole. And I talked to Monica about it, and we looked at the maps, and I took a map home, and I did some measurements, and the house is about six feet over into the sinkhole area. I wish I had been informed of that, at the time that the permit was issued to me.
This is a question for staff. What are the sinkhole requirements here? So if we've got, if we've got a structure that's encroaching on a sinkhole, I guess there's two problems there, there's one's stability, and secondly, Monica, you said that it does not comply with one of, one of the requirements.
Is there, well, the planning conditions of the rest sinkhole? You just have evidence, first we have the rest sinkhole, you know, use of the mitigation of the sinkhole to...
So, would my understanding be correct, that, that the applicant would have an opportunity to mitigate the sinkhole, if in fact, we, we require that, and there are standards for that, for sinkhole mitigation that could be met? Is that correct?
Yeah, so when we deal with sinkholes at the planning commission, typically, we're talking about, in the subdivision construction process, when we're talking about where the public infrastructure goes.
At the development stage.
At the development stage. Sinkholes on private property, whether it be at the Corvette Museum, or on a particular lot, we don't have any, any requirements. We do have a fix for sinkholes when they're in the public right-of-way, that may or may not work for certain situations on private property, but I would not know how to necessarily address that. It would be up to the property owner, their home builder, and whoever they would hire to mitigate that sinkhole. We would have no requirement or check. What we're talking about here is through the, when we have a zone change process, one of the things that we check and analyze, based on what the comprehensive plan says, is are there any sinkholes? Did the applicant address that with a development plan condition? In this case, they did not, and so that's why Monica's saying it's, it's not in compliance with that one, just because it was not addressed.
So the question really isn't regarding the residents, it's regarding the change and, and looking at it from a development perspective. Am I understanding that correctly?
I would say that's fair, yes.
Okay.
Would she be able to get homeowner's insurance if she's building on a sinkhole? Is there a restriction on homeowner's insurance for that dangerous?
They do have sinkhole insurance now, to my knowledge, but whether or not you're required, I think it's pretty much up to the, that particular... No, it's not required, but it's up to that, each particular insurance agency, how they want to do that.
And when you said you discovered that it was encroaching on the sinkhole, how did you make that discovery?
I had gone in and spoken with Monica. She had actually called me a couple days prior, and told me this, and she was asking me some questions for this meeting, I suppose, and she had a map, and on the computer, we were measuring and looking, you know, and then she gave me a printout of the map, and I took it home and I measured, and I thought I was in the clear when I was at your office, but discovered I'm about six feet over. I feel very frightful about building on a sinkhole, and, so I'm not going to do that.
You may just add that our GIS data that we have with the sinkhole layer, it's not survey-grade. It could be off by a few feet, so it's not definitive that, yes, this is definitely in, because it's on the edge. Granted, if it was smack-dime in the middle, we'd have more confidence in saying that that's where it's located, but there is definitely room for error in that data that we have.
What's our, what's our question here tonight? Do we allow the building to continue?
I'm not going to build on that location.
Look, Ben, it's just, I was making the determination just to change the zone.
Right.
Is this lot size and this configuration appropriate? You, you, we're hearing that the location of the structure might change, so you might ask about orientation of if it's moved, those types of things, whatever you think might make it more in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
So it's also possible that this applicant may not be the person that actually builds there, and we should also look at building conditions, restrictions, et cetera?
That would be, yes, up to, up to you.
May I speak?
Absolutely.
I thought that was done when I submitted the application for the building permit.
Help me understand, you thought what was done, ma'am?
Everything that you were just talking about a minute ago.
That's okay.
Oh, all that, yeah.
With regard to building orientation, did you, when you applied for your building permit, did you also indicate, for example, what the exterior of the structure was going to be built out of?
They didn't ask me that.
I see, okay. Is it your intention to build on this property in the future, or is it your intention to sell this property?
I don't know. I'm so confused right now. I'm, I'm really in a deep hole right now.
That's all right. We understand.
I spent $1,700 on windows, and I've got all these windows, you know, and the foundation, and everything was set to go.
Might have a yard sale or something.
Commissioners, any other questions for applicant?
Not going to build there. We're just going to do the rezoning, but then if we do the rezoning, don't we need restrictions, as far as the house facing the road, and the things that we normally do?
Have to come back, have to come back for that. Have to come back for that.
Is that accurate? I want to make sure I got clarity on that. I, if we don't put any restrictions on this, they can build whatever they want at that point, correct?
Right now, there are two development plan conditions that were submitted on page two, at the bottom.
Now, if we don't do anything, they can build whatever they want anyway, right?
Yes, one way to look at it, if, well, we don't have the exhibit, but if you look up there, I mean, on page nine, that shows the preliminary plat and lot configuration, and if you look, the dash line says old lot line to be removed. So previously, previously, the property configuration was in two tracks, so there are still two tracks proposed. If it weren't for the new configuration of the property lines, the rezoning wouldn't have been required, you could apply for a permit. At that point, there are no restrictions whatsoever.
So that's the point you're making, Greg? They could build whatever they wanted anyway?
It, it's just that, right now, because of the subdivision and the rezoning that's being required, that's when it comes before you all, for you to evaluate with the comprehensive plan items, so that's what you're evaluating this evening, is if this lot size and this location and what is proposed is compatible with, or in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Do we have anyone in the audience that is opposed to this zone change, or has a question? Thank you, Ms. Waldemer. I think we have all our questions answered. If nothing else, then I'll call for a motion. If nothing else, then I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number 201950Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, and the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan that's demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Commissioner Warren? Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Rich? Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion's passed, we'll send this to the county. Our second case tonight is 201951Z County. Jackson White, Carl Redmond McPeak, and Nola Williams have filed an application of rezon a tract of land containing approximately 1.14 acres located at 5833 Scottsville Road from residential estate to highway business with a general development plan. And we hear from Monica again.
Thank you, Chair Houston. We had a pre-application conference for the property you see outlined in yellow on November 4th. As Chair Houston said, that property is zoned residential estate. If this area looks familiar, it should, because you just saw a case for this, right, pretty much right next door, just here recently. The property is a single-family residential, and this is up Scottsville Road, so you've got kind of a mixture there, public institutional, single-family, multifamily, commercial agriculture. And then the future land use is commercial. So I will leave this up that we can reference as we go along, but the applicants are proposing to rezone this property to highway business in order to develop the property with a mixture of commercial uses. Property will serve as an extension of the adjacent development to the south that you all approved in September of this year. Agriculture is the original zoning of the property, and the property was rezoned from ag to residential estate in 2014. The proposed highway business zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in the commercial flume category. It may be appropriate if this body determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. On page one of your staff report, I'll just note there on the, near the bottom that there is a mature tree line running along the western property line adjacent to the existing single-family use. And I don't have anything to draw your attention to on page three, so I'll, or to page two, so I'll go straight to page three, where you'll find the area-specific policy review, since this area is in the, this property is in the Scottsville Road corridor study boundary. Staff evaluated ten policies. They all complied, and then there were two, actually, that staff had noted that should be left up to the Planning Commission. One of those is number four, you see there on that same page, that states a building material requirement for both residential and non-residential development for facades facing Scottsville Road, possibly all roadways. The applicants committed in development plan condition number 10, that the building facades of all buildings within 150 feet of Scottsville Road shall be constructed of 70% brick, EPHIS, stone, or modern masonry or cementous material. Buildings more than 150 feet from Scottsville Road will be constructed of architectural metal with a minimum of 20% brick, EPHIS, stone, modern masonry, or cementous material with one evergreen per 15 feet of side facade facing Scottsville Road. Architectural metal buildings will incorporate concealed fasteners on the sides facing Scottsville Road. Plain-faced blocks shall not be used as a visible exterior finished material on any building. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal complies with this recommendation. The other recommendation that we noted, should be up to you all to determine, was the one right after that, number five. A requirement that all new signage be monument style with a lower square footage cap, as well as prohibiting LED signs. Development plan condition number three states that signage shall be monument style and should not exceed 15 feet in height or 150 square feet in area of sign face. No LED signs will be installed. The zoning ordinance permits freestanding signage in this proposed zone up to 150 square feet. And so it's up to you all to determine if the proposal complies with this recommendation. So I'll go through the development plan conditions. They're probably going to sound familiar to you because they're identical to what is right next door. Number one, deals with underground utilities. Number two, deals with access. There will be no access to adjacent residential uses. Number three, signage I just talked about. Number four, roof level screening of HVAC and similar facilities. Number five, buffering. The boundaries of the property adjacent to residential uses will be buffered by a 10-foot wide vegetative barrier, retaining existing mature tree canopy insofar as practicable and additional vegetation as required by the Planning Commission. Number six, deals with green space. At least 20% of the gross area of the property will be devoted to green space. Number seven, no parking will be allowed on the property within 25, the 25-foot setback from running Scottsville Road. Number eight, no building on the property shall be constructed to exceed two stories in height. Number nine, list prohibited uses. Number 10, the building exteriors, we just talked about that. Number 11, the property will be developed with a community mailbox system and uniformed site lighting. And number 12, hours of operation for any occupant of the property will not exceed 6:00 a.m. through and including 1:00 a.m. daily. Moving on to Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 17 items, 13 of which may comply. LU113 deals with compatibility. LU2 and LU21, Planning Commission should determine if it is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. LU214, PR17, NCR16, the proposal generally complies as the applicants committed in DPC number five, that the boundaries of the property adjacent to residential uses will be buffered. May comply with 252 and HN12. Planning Commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. LU253, this body should determine if the proposal is an opportunity for revitalization and redevelopment. Proposal generally complies with LU28 and complies with the majority of the recommendations from the Scottsville Road corridor study. Proposal may comply with HN1 and HN13. Planning Commission should determine if the proposed development is a compatible infill project that preserves and enhances the character of the area. And this body should determine compliance with ED1 and if the proposed development will help to diversify the local economy. So I think, I think I've touched on everything there in the staff review, just noting again that these DPCs are identical to the ones that this body approved in September for the adjacent property. I'll go to the first page with the points to consider. The proposal is consistent with the flume and commercial category. The proposed preliminary development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, for site characteristics and site design, complies with the majority of the recommendations from the Scottsville Road corridor study and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the Planning Commission. So that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicants are here, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
So the one that we did next door, we did allow it to stay open to 1:00 a.m.
Till 1:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Yeah, these are the same as the ones that were approved for next door.
Including the 150 feet, architectural metal?
Everything is the same, yep.
Commissioners, any other questions for Monica? If not?
Talk about it, we approved the same thing right next door.
Right.
Here's, I'm Linda Thomas, and I represent Jack White. And we have also here with us Carl McPeak. Carl, we're, right here, right here they are. You all will stand up. Mr. White is the contract VND for this property, and Mr. McPeak is one of the owners. And he is a power of attorney for the other owner, who is his sister on this property. And as you all have pointed out several times, the development plan conditions on this rezoning will make this 1.14 acres just an extension of the 58, 56, 51 Scottsville Road amended development plan conditions, which you all approved after several rounds of discussion and which, on which we made several amendments prior to approval back in September of this year. So it should look familiar to you. And Mr. White will, will tell you, we have a, the purpose of the purchase of this property is to make a, pretty much a mirror image of the building, the front building, just one building is going to be on this property. And it's to make a mirror image of the other, of the building that's going to be on the approximately six acres to the south. And this one's going to be a little bit smaller, correct, Mr. White? And if you... Right, and this is the same, not the same, this is a larger version of the exhibit that I introduced before this commission, showing you, this isn't identical to what it's going to be, but it's very close. It's in the production stages.
So it's essentially the same architecture, just a slightly smaller building?
Going to be a mirror image brick, nice, very nice.
I was just wondering why the 1:00 a.m., that's what I was concerned about.
Was the open for COVIDs?
Commissioners, any other questions? Do we have anyone in the audience that has a question or has any opposition to this request? Thank you. We have no other questions, and we'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with, in condition upon the general development plan, docket number 201951Z County. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan that's demonstrated by the compliance with the following, with the objectives and the action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passed. Move that forward. The next two cases will be heard together. Mr. Peterson? 201909 Flume Wheat Land Development LLC has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately 20.16 acres located at 360 Blue Level Road from low-density residential and mixed-use commercial to moderate-density residential. And if that is acceptable and passes, we will move into the zone change that's requested from agriculture to light industrial with a general development plan to RS1D, single-family residential with a general development plan.
Thank you, Chair Houston and Commissioners. At your seats, you do have some updated development plan conditions. It's the one titled, "We're the Property Owners," is Wheat Land Development LLC. So we will be looking and referencing those instead of what's in the staff report. Pre-application date for this property that's outlined in yellow was on November 13th, 2019. The proposal is to develop the property with a maximum of 80, it's now 88 detached, single-family residential and attached twin-home lots. We, moving on to the existing zoning, current zoning is agriculture and light industrial. Agriculture's original zoning of the property, a portion of that property was rezoned from agriculture to light industrial, as well as the future land use map was amended, and that was in 2017. I'll switch to, switch to that future land use map. So that kind of pink color sliver that you see heading back in there is what was, what was changed to mixed-use commercial. It's also, a property is also, a portion of this property is also in the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. And I will, let's see, find it here, as long as I can find. Blue Level Road, it was just this first part of the piece that's right here. If you can see the cursor, the property is actually here off of Blue Level Road. So just that first several hundred feet or so is, falls within that Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan, which we'll go over that in a, in a bit. We did do a density map. We'll look, take a closer look at that a second. And then the flume amendment plat, rezoning, zone change plat was provided by Landmark Engineering. And then we do have a conceptual plan, which you also have that as an updated color conceptual plan at your seat as well. So we'll, I'll leave it here as we kind of go through the staff report. I'm going to move on to page two of the staff report. When we're looking at the, back at the future land use map, I'll go ahead and jump back there. So the future land use map, so flume designations, low-density residential and mixed-use commercial. Again, they're proposing to amend that to moderate-density residential. The moderate-density residential land use category encourages areas developed for a higher density, single-family detached and attached, as well as semi-detached multifamily developments, such as duplexes, townhouses, apartment buildings, condominiums, and mobile home parks. densities in this land use should range between 3.5 and 13 dwelling units per acre. Again, the proposal before you tonight is up to 87 attached and detached single-family homes on their, all on their own lots. LU114, the comprehensive plan outlines the procedures for amending the future land use map. The commission's approval of a future land use map amendment should be based on three following, three criteria listed there. The one that the applicant has chosen to address is that the proposed use is clearly compatible with the existing surrounding development, as demonstrated by the applicant. And to go along with their application, they provided the following narrative to address that future land use map amendment. The applicant stated that the proposed use is clearly compatible with existing surrounding development. The surrounding properties consist mostly of agricultural uses with single and multifamily residential buildings, as well as public institutional buildings mixed in. The proposed use of single-family residential homes is consistent with the current surrounding uses. The densities of the surrounding properties range from rural-density residential to higher-density multifamily residential. The proposed density of moderate residential is consistent with the current surrounding densities. The proposed development will contain a mix of detached, single-family homes and twin homes. The development will not exceed the capacity of current infrastructure. We'll quickly switch back to existing land use, and you can see directly adjacent to, whoop, it changed on me. Directly adjacent to, outlined in red, you have the blue, which is two public institution, as churches on either side. And then the single-family neighborhood is, is there, kind of in that north, northeast quadrant. It's also surrounded by agriculture and some, some vacant properties. So that's, that's the surrounding area. Moving on to the site characteristics review. Look, I'll just highlight a few things here, water adequacy. The property is served by Warren County Water District. It does not currently have adequate water flow to meet the minimum fire protection requirements. So upgrades to that infrastructure will be required if the application is approved. In dealing with wastewater, the property is located within 2,000 feet of sanitary sewer, so it will be required to be connected to sewer if approved. And natural features, a mature tree line runs along the portion of the eastern property line. line. Uh, it's about a two-acre cluster of mature trees located along the west-central portion of the property. Uh, there is a sinkhole also located on the property. But the applicant did address the sinkholes in their development plan condition number six, and addressed the existing trees, uh, tree lines located along the property lines in the development plan condition number seven. Regarding prime farmland, the property contains a soil type classified as farmland of statewide importance. And then regarding flood plains and wetlands, there are a couple of wetlands located on the property as well. Moving along to the site design and compatibility review, I'm going to jump back to the density map and density analysis. So densities in the surrounding area range from .1 dwelling unit acre to 15.38 dwelling units per acre. The dense, again, the density for the proposed development is now 4.36 dwelling units an acre. A lot was added in. The, the properties along Blue Level Road are mainly agriculture, with some rural-density residential uses mixed in. Hillview Mills is located in the vicinity and contains a mixture of moderate-density and single-family and higher-density multifamily uses. So you've got a variety of different densities and a variety of different forms in and around this property. Building material review, the majority of the buildings in the vicinity are composed of brick. Some structures incorporate vinyl as an accent material or in soffits and trim. The applicants have committed in the development plan conditions that no residence or outbuilding shall have asbestos siding, asphalt siding, wood siding, or metal siding, and that all residences shall have a foundation materials of split-faced block, brick, stucco, or stone. And those are both referenced in development plan conditions 11 and 9. Regarding, uh, building orientation, the majority of the existing homes along Blue Level Road are oriented to face Blue Level Road. There are several residences in Hillview Mills that also have rear facades oriented towards Blue Level Road. The applicant has agreed in development plan condition number 20, that any house on the lots nearest Blue Level Road will either incorporate fencing or evergreen trees to screen any rear-facing facades. So they have agreed to screen, uh, any facade that is not oriented in that manner. Pedestrian, bicycle, or transit facilities, applicant has agreed to install sidewalks on both sides of the street, referencing in development plan condition two. As mentioned previously, a portion of this proposed development is located within the boundary of the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. Call out a few of those. WV-1C, any project should be designed and developed in a manner that will not impair the reasonable, long-term use of nearby properties in fulfillment of the land use policies of the focal point plan and the comprehensive plan. And it will be up to this body to determine compliance with its policy. Walnut Valley 2A, residential development should be compatible with adjacent land uses. New development should not exceed the overall density of adjacent development by more than 50%. The proposed density for the development is 4.36 dwelling units per acre. Densities of adjacent developments that are depicted on the density map are 15.38 dwelling units per acre in Hillview Mills, 0.13 dwelling units per acre in the Estill Branham subdivision, 0.1 dwelling units per acre in the Bryan and Kelly Marriott subdivision, 0.94 dwelling units per acre Windmill Heights, and 0.47 dwelling units per acre in Old Tram subdivision. The proposed density of this development at 4.36 dwelling units per acre exceeds the densities of four of the five adjacent developments by more than 50%, and is, is roughly 72% less dense than Hillview Mills. So the planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. Walnut Valley 2B, to create visual interests, interest in single-family residential neighborhoods, no single facade or elevation should be repeated on adjacent lots or more than twice within the same block. Variation in exterior building cover material, covering materials encouraged. The applicant did agree in development plan condition number 17 to adhere to the items that I just mentioned, so it does comply with this policy. Walnut Valley 2C, encourage the development of rear-service drives. No more than 25% of the units should utilize front-loaded garages. The garage portion of any house structure should have staggered alignment extending beyond the front building line of the house, or recessed back from the front building line of the house. The applicant agreed in development plan condition number 18, that the garage portion of any house structure shall have a staggered alignment extending beyond the front building line of the house, or recessed back from the front building line, and so therefore complies with a portion of, oh, WV-2C. WV-2E, last but not least, a minimum of 20% of the tract to be developed should be set aside and maintained as open space. All open spaces should interconnect by a minimum of three-foot wide walking trail. Actual construction of paved walking trails dedicated to public use may substitute for some portion of the open space requirement. So the applicant has agreed in development plan condition number 19, that 20% of the area within the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan area shall be set aside as maintained as open space. Walking trails were not addressed by the applicant, so the proposal complies with a portion of this policy. So, moving on to page five, staff evaluated six of the, the six Walnut Valley policies. You found, uh, two policies, uh, in compliance, and a portion of two policies in compliance, but two that were not in compliance. And so, again, compliance with the Walnut Valley Plan should be determined by this body. We can add traffic impact study requirements. The Warren County Public Works did not require traffic impact study for this application. It was waived by Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, who looked at it as well, in lieu of the developer installing a right-turn lane into the proposed development. And the applicant agreed to this improvement in development plan condition number five. So looking at the development plan conditions, I will not repeat the ones I went over unless you need more information. I will just mention the ones that I did not mention, so now I'm looking at the addition that was at your seat for the development plan conditions. Development plan condition number one, there shall be a maximum of 88 lots consisting of detached, single-family and twin-home lots, all of which have access only to interior streets as indicated on the included conceptual plan. Uh, that, the only change from the staff report there was it went from 87 to 88 in this version. And I believe all the other, uh, development plan conditions are the same as submitted for the staff report. Two, already went over. Three, developer will install cluster mailboxes underground utilities. Number four, developer will install uniform, street lighting of metal, fiberglass, or composite materials. We've went over five, six, and seven. Number eight, single-family residents on lot, all lots will be constructed at a minimum of 1,200 square feet heated and cooled space. Nine was the foundation materials. Ten, driveways shall be concrete and be of sufficient size to provide for minimum on-site parking of two vehicles parked side by side without blocking a sidewalk. Number 11 was the building material requirement we went over. Twelve, no lot shall be permitted to have an above-ground propane tank, except for small propane tanks used for personal grilling. Number 13, no commercial vehicles such as trucks, boats, campers, shall be parked or stored on the property other than for the purpose of loading or unloading. For 14, all satellite dishes and garbage receptacles must be housed at the rear of the property. Number 15, no wrecked or inoperable vehicles will be allowed to remain on any lot for longer than 48 hours unless enclosed in a structure. Number 16, development plan conditions eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, and 18 will remain development plan conditions only until a subdivision plat or separate declaration of restrictions is recorded with respect to the property, after which they shall no longer be development plan conditions. Now, the next four is a little different than what we, what we see, but I will do my best to explain it. But 17, 18, 19, and 20, uh, which we went over a portion of these, but these only apply to that portion of the proposed development that will be within that Walnut Valley, that is encompassed by that Walnut Valley boundary. And I believe that is roughly this, this line here. Is that, is that correct? Yes, okay. So, so these will only apply from that line forward towards Blue Level Road. And that is, that no single facade or elevation shall be repeated on adjacent lots more than twice within the same block. The garage portion of any house shall have staggered alignment extended beyond the front building line of the house, or recessed back from the front line of the house. 20% of the area will be set aside and maintained as open space. And then, um, any house lots nearest Blue Level Road shall incorporate fencing or evergreen trees to screen the side or rear-facing facades. So again, those only apply to tho, to those that are from that black line forward to Blue Level Road. All of those development plan conditions apply 1 through 16 to the, to all of the development.
So Ben, real quick, so the policies that you said that were not in compliance, we're only talking about those, correct?
Uh, yes. So the only, only portion of the development that is encompassed by that Walnut Valley Plan is, is from that black line forward. Yes, sir. Moving on to, on to page six, the Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 22 items, found seven in compliance, roughly three not in compliance, and 12 would be up to this body. Uh, we've been over, I think, the subject matter of most of the majority of those, so I will not repeat those. Um, and so I will just finish up on page one with the points to consider. Planning commission should consider if the future land use map amendment is appropriate for this parcel. Should that future land use map amendment be granted? Again, going from the, um, low-density residential mixed-use commercial to the proposed moderate density. The, then, uh, the zone change comes about, and the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with the limitations noted regarding the current water availability. And then the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And again, as always, compatibility of the proposed development and the application's compliance with that portion of the Walnut Valley focal point plan, as well as comprehensive plan, should be determined by the planning commission. I will be happy to answer any questions, and the applicants are here as well, and I'm sure would like to, to speak to.
Ben, on their amended, on their amended, uh, development plan conditions, number 11 says no residence or outbuilding shall have asbestos siding, asphalt, wood siding, or metal siding or building materials. So I would like to hear from the applicant what that means, or we would like to hear from them.
Sure. Couple of questions. I'm sorry, we going to do that? Do you want to do that now, or you want to entertain more questions?
Do you want to just wait and let the applicant address that?
That'd be a fair question for them.
You, um, do you know how these development plan conditions compare, say, to the properties to the, I guess that would be to the southwest, like Hillview Mills? For example, split-faced block on the foundation, um, can you speak to that?
Um, Ms. Hurt, do you have any insight on that sheet?
I don't remember specifically about the foundations, but I do believe on page... Uh, page three, under the building materials review, uh, we, we did note in the staff report that the majority of the buildings in the vicinity are comprised of brick, and that some structures incorporate vinyl as an accent material, insoffits and trim. But we did not specifically address the foundation materials for the surrounding structures.
And is it my understanding that currently, we don't have, we don't have a specific mix proposed in...
A percentage.
Uh, pardon me?
A percentage.
Percentages. Do we have a percentage? We don't currently, okay. Last question is regarding the open space that you spoke of.
Hmm.
This property will have sidewalks, correct?
Correct. Uh, number two, all streets will be constructed with curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides.
Okay. So do the sidewalks count toward that open space?
Um, I think that has varied in the past, but generally, no, because they're just a required element. Open space would be in addition to required elements.
Do they, do the sidewalks count toward the, I think the other was a, a walking trail?
Hmm.
They do count toward the walking trail?
Oh, open space would be generally an amenity or something that is provided beyond the normal, some, uh, I believe we do allow sometimes drainage areas if they have recreational components to them, a dog park, or, or a walking trail or something in addition to a sidewalk, but typically a ditch and a sidewalk and your normal grass strip, those do not count as, as open space.
But they committed to open space other than where those six lots are? Because that's in the Walnut Valley Plan, those little six lots. Have they committed to the other section of the...
Not by my reading of this, that might, Mr. Alcott may want to address that.
Chairman Houston and Commissioners, good to see you all again tonight. It's been a while since I've been able to, had the pleasure of being in front of you. Mark Alcott is my name, and I represent the developer, Darren Wheat here, sitting to my right with Wheat Land Development, who's got the two proposals for the Flume Amendment and for the, um, zone change. Commissioner Warren, I'll go straight to your question, because that, in regard to, number 11, in regard to building materials. And that is a restriction on any building materials that is deemed inappropriate that would be used on the property. And I believe what your question is, what are the building materials going to be on this development? The goal of this developer is building homes under the price point of $200,000 is the goal in here. And so with the combination of what we have available in this type of development with twin homes, and homes that are 1,200 square feet, we've added the amenities of underground utilities, curb gutter, sidewalks, all the things that you'd see in any other one. However, our lot sizes are a little bit smaller, so we have a density of 4.36. It's going to be a little, um, more dense than you're going to see in the other surrounding areas that are the traditional farms that are cut up into parcels. But the main reason is, is that we have a sewer that we're connecting to, so we can, that promotes a more moderate density that we can do. And the type of, of home that we're selling here, or we're hoping to sell here, that we feel like is, is, um, needed in our market, is one that does have vinyl siding. It can have, um, brick facades and things of that nature to, and we've committed to changing the facades, and I believe we have some building elevations that are in your packet. I don't know, Jessica, are they on the...
They are, sir.
Here also. Here's one of the building elevations here. And all the building elevations that we've looked at at this point are ones that have multi-dimensional front, um, with garages, um, in front offset and inset, so it greets some dimension. And so you have some room for different types of, um, building materials on there. And so, um, that is what the purpose of that is. And so the answer to your question, I believe, would there be vinyl-sided homes? And the answer is yes. In trying to get to the price point of having a more affordable home for people in the Warren County Bowling Green Market, um, does that answer your question, Commissioner Warren?
It doesn't.
Okay, what, okay, don't want to presume your question, and what is that?
Generally, when we see number 11, we will see a percentage of brick, stucco, modern masonry materials, and this is kind of vague. So is the... So is the developer willing to commit to a certain percentage of modern masonry materials? All we're having here is, and Mark not criticizing, but what's not going to be on there instead of what will be on there.
That's what I was trying to answer your question, is yes, the majority of what these homes are going to be built out of will be vinyl, if that's your question.
That's clarification for us.
Okay.
There's a little more of the brick and, and having at least some kind of guarantee of, of certain amount. And so I think what, what Dean's asking and I'm asking is, is the developer willing to talk about putting some kind of percentage in that will require something other than vinyl?
Well, the answer is I'll be glad to consult with Darren in a moment. And rather than doing one at a time, if there's multiple things that are, I'll be glad to, and then we'll bring it as a package of what we feel like we can and can't do. Commissioner Graham, I know you had a question, but I wanted to address the open space of Commissioner Park also.
Regarding the, kind of along the same line.
Okay.
While I, I certainly appreciate what the developer is trying to do, and we need that product in the marketplace, perhaps we could also consider homes that are going to be 100% vinyl. Maybe those homes go to at least a brick foundation. And then if we could incorporate, as Dean has suggested earlier, some percentage. At least we know there's going to occasionally be a brick home in that subdivision.
I understand that question. And so you're asking for if there is 100% vinyl, brick, rather than the other composites that are available?
Other than a split face block.
Right.
Yeah, which is, it, it makes the, it helps the appearance of the home without adding, clearly there's a cost associated with it, but some would argue it's a, it's a insignificant cost.
I understand that request, and I appreciate that.
Because driving through the other subdivisions, the compatibility would not be there for all vinyl. I mean, I drove through a lot of subdivisions out there, and they're not all 100% vinyl. So if they would consider some kind of modern masonry materials or brick, I mean, not necessarily all brick, but, you know, a more, how do you say that? A little bit, not fancy, but a little bit more up-to-date facades instead of just 100% vinyl.
And that's why we're trying to show this, this elevation that we have in front of you is 100% vinyl. But it has some, some masonry products in, in, on the, the front that can be utilized and things. And, and I believe that's something that we can come up with, something that would be palatable for you.
To make it as, to give, to give your, your client as much flexibility as possible, if you wanted to add a certain percentage of masonry products on, on some of these homes.
The facade?
The last part.
Or the face?
Yeah, on the front, on the front facade.
Right.
See, all of these homes, and these are actually, these are very, very helpful, by the way, but all of these homes are shown as slab-on-grade. There are no exposed foundations shown in any of these elevations. But we know that these are probably going to be on crawl space, and now we've got that exposed block. And that's what we're trying to address.
I understand that. Any other areas that have questions or comments in regard to that area in, in building materials? I'd like to go back to the concept plan. If you see the, the blue on the far right-hand side of, that is the open space of 20%. And that is the, right next to Blue Level Road. And so we're not putting a home right on the Blue Level Road. And that is in compliance with the Walnut Valley focal point area. And in, in fairness to also a lot of the, the newer developments there, they are completely in the Walnut Valley area, and they have some garages that face the back. They have some alleys and things along those lines. And if you notice, there, the two areas that we are non-compliant in on page five, it's only a portion that we're not compliant. If you notice, C is encouraging the rear service drives. With our concept plan with as narrow as we have, we don't really have an option for rear service drives in the Walnut Valley focal plan, because that's where that requirement is in an overlay. And so we don't have that. And so in working with staff, we came up with, well, we're going to have staggered twin homes. We're going to have garages that are staggered. So it creates more of a character of different homes rather than a pure duplex that mirrors itself. And so that was our goal. And so we are in compliance with a portion, and there's a portion that we, we physically can't do with the size of the, the land that we have. And then the other port was two E, and that is 20% of the, of the tract in that area should be open space. And we are completely in compliance with the 20%. We just have not put a design for some walking trails. But of course, when we're having a sidewalk, the walk, the sidewalk will run right into the open space and make it very easy to establish that walking trail. We're just a, a design concept plan where we're not prepared to say this is what it's going to look like and be committed to that. It's not that we won't do it, it's just something that we haven't designed at this point. And so those two non-compliances are just a partial non-compliance.
But Mark, you're saying the sidewalks will allow people to get into the open space?
Correct. Then the open space would naturally roll into some open trail on that spot. And the other issue in the Walnut Valley that we are in compliance on is that our building orientation is not facing Blue Level Road. Because if it did, then we'd need to have a driveway for every building on there. And so we've got one entrance, this is right next to the, the Bosnian Worship Center there. And then on the right is West End Church of Christ. And by us coming in there, we're trying to be completely as good neighbors as we can. And we, we've talked with our neighbors and with West End Church of Christ. They are not on sewer, and we're going to establish and give them a sewer hook on right where they need it. And so that's one of the things that we're doing. It's not under development plan condition, but it's something that we've already worked out with our, our neighbor that we have there. And so they face, and their driveway is right there. So we're trying to minimize, minimize how many cars are coming and going. And we are going to put in the right-hand turn lane that the Department of Transportation has asked us to do and the county's asked us to do, and glad to do it. And it will help minimize the impact of traffic in that location. So, and the other thing that we're doing is that there is a very mature tree line that is there on the, what I would call the north or the east side at the top of there, that we are not going to impact any trees over 10-inch in diameter at 12 inches off the ground. And so, and there's, those trees are 30, 40 feet tall. And so a lot of them are in the neighbor's land, so we wouldn't touch them anyway. But anything on our side, we're not going to do. So it creates that natural vegetative buffer that is currently there. And so that meets some of the compatibility issues that we have. That pretty much hits the high points, other than, this is one of the few situations where we're going to have a little downzoning. Because what this is currently zoned and what it was approved in September of seventeen was light industrial. And it was going to be a commercial building with trucks and, and heavy equipment and those type things on it for a construction company. This is a completely different change. This is going to be homes where people are living next to, right between two nice churches that are there. And so that is something that we believe makes this more compatible for this area, being residential in nature and being at a price point where we don't have much inventory at that price point in Warren County at this point. And we're not trying to make cheap housing. We're trying to make very affordable, efficient housing that people, and what we're finding, and I'm finding in my developers, is that people want a, a nice home, but they don't want to mow one and a half acres. They want to be able to have something that they can maintain easily on a Saturday or an afternoon when they come home from work, and that's what these do. And I think you're seeing that in a lot of development across the county, is that people want a nice home, but not necessarily a lot of land to maintain. So if there's not any other questions, I'll be glad to consult with the, with the, um...
Can I ask you what would be 89, what light 89 is right outside the Walnut Valley? What is that?
Sorry, my... The one that's...
There's not anything on it?
I believe that is where the gas, Atmos gas line is, and we can't build on it.
Okay.
And so that'll be open space also.
Okay. So all the blue, you're saying, all three blue spots?
The blue is, is, the, the blue on the right is open space. The green is going to be open space, but it is really there primarily because there's a gas line that runs through, through there. And the blue in the back is drainage areas for what that will be. And so it will be open, there will nothing be built there, but that's the drainage design there.
Retention, Ben?
Yes, water retention, yes. Making sure that we keep all of our water in compliance, and we will be in compliance with anything that's developed there. Anything else, Commissioners? I'll be very brief. You can ask a question maybe while I'm talking. I'll be glad to.
You'll have to come up, we'll have to swear you in. Come to the microphone, your name and address?
Fuji Avdick, 466 Daystar Circle.
Swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Can we pull up the aerial view? Um, I'm, I just have a question, because I didn't, you know, but, very concerned. Yeah, um, is there anywhere we can zoom in?
Use pointer.
Yeah, pointer. So I'm very familiar with this Bosnian center right here. Uh, when you mentioned the northeast, are you referring to this side or this side where you're keeping the tree line? I don't know which, the east side on this.
That's a good question. If I could have the pointer, I'd be glad to show you.
Is it this side or this side?
It's the right side. Yeah, see where the trees, you can see them on the aerial.
I understand that. That's right neighborhood.
Correct.
But I, I understand that. So Islamic Center, I think here has 11 acres or so. One thing I do know, there's the service road right here. I don't know what a service road really entails, but I know that Islamic Center, they build a soccer field here. They're building a big gym right here. Uh, there's also a cemetery, everything from right here, this parking, is all cemetery right there. So one thing that I would suggest is keeping this tree line, not only for protection of the cemetery, but, you know, who wants to look at a cemetery behind their house, right? And then the service road, how would that be addressed on this? Because I knew there was issues in the past where people couldn't drive down that road, or you couldn't do anything because it's a service road. I mean, I don't really know what a service road is, but I just know there was issues with it.
Well, I, I mentioned, because the trees in the tree line on the northeast are a little more mature than the ones there beside the cemetery. But this development plan condition is for the entirety of the property. So any trees on the property line are not going to be disturbed if they're, that size or larger. And so that includes those trees next to the cemetery. And I did drive out there and look at it with it, and there is a service road. And I believe the service road that you have on the Islamic, um, side is down the property line. And that anything on your side is, of course, that property's, and I believe the majority of it is there. There is some that is on this side that would not be utilized any longer, would be the response. Because that road wouldn't be in the backyards of the concept plan.
So what's, what's a service road? That's my question. Isn't that like for the city and somebody, so?
I think, Mark, I think more specifically his question is, is a service road a public right-of-way? Or is it, is it proper, is it private property, or are there any easements here?
There's, there's no easements in the title. The service road is basically an old farm lane that's been there. And the property line may go back and forth, but there's room for, for cars on either side for a lane back there on each property. And so it's not a public property, public lane.
So if, if the power line company wants to come out and fix the power lines, we can say, no, this is private property, you cannot come over there?
Well, that would be all the...
No, I'm saying, if it's not a public service road, which we understood it was, I'm all for this project, I'm not, I didn't, you know, for this night. But I'm just asking, so we know in the future who, who's responsible, you know? If you, they want to drive back through your property, you know, people are going to be like, hold up, can't drive through my backyard, or can we say, hold up, you can't drive through our property?
Well, the answer is yes, you can control your property. Now, if a, if a utility needs to come on there, they have easements to come on to work on power lines and such. And it, it, that road just happens to be there because it's something that has, has been there and used by the property, and you can control your property and keep people off your property and do whatever you want with your property.
So the service road is your, just, I just want to confirm, it's on, it's not on both properties?
It is majority, I believe, on the...
But it's on both properties?
Well, I'll maybe let Darren ask that question. You'll need to come up here too, and swear to tell the truth, and put your name and address.
So we could, we need to get all this on tape, so your name and address?
Darren Wheat, 1006 Montclair Court.
And you swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
Okay.
The, the service road is a worn rural electric road, I'm pretty certain. We're in conversation possibly of eliminating that overhead power line, and that, so that service road will not be needed. It may all go underground. That's part of this development process we've been talking to them about. As far as the service road, though, can we get back to the plan?
Sure.
Concept plan?
Uh, yes, please. The service road now runs, I think Fuji up to about right here. And we're going to have now have utilized this entire section of new public right-of-way. So anything, any of the power lines that are, if our proposal doesn't work out with them, they can access the entire power line up and down the new public right-of-way road that will be built. So they'll still be able to get to and service their overhead power, if that makes sense.
Yes. I mean, I don't know if there's something, you know, maybe that would be connected that way, or is that gate sometimes closed? I don't know. I, I was just asking those questions just to be clear, and maybe to protect all the trees next to the cemetery, even for your own good.
Definitely, we, we'd do that for sure.
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions? Some more questions?
No, I don't have anybody else here.
Well, I was just asking, okay. Okay. Um, let me consult with a couple of things on the building materials, and I'll be right back.
Do, do we have any opposition to this development? And do we have any other questions? If you'll state your name and address?
Chain and Goolsby, 1040 Blue Level Road, Swear to Tell the Truth. Um, it's not necessarily, I guess, opposition, it's just, I have a lot of concerns. The, there was no clear definition as to how many were going to be single-family homes, how many were going to be the twin homes. You know, say if you split it 50/50, you're potentially talking about adding 260-plus vehicles that are coming in and out of there every day if every household has at least two vehicles. That, where that drive is, is at the top of basically a blind hill. There was an accident there this morning. So my concern for sure is the amount of traffic that you are now entering into the Blue Level Road right there. I understand the right-hand lane, you know, that helps for getting people into the, the planned area, but what about them getting out? I have a, a big concern about that. And then just the sheer number of the dwellings that are listed for this property. I just think it's a little, a little bit much compared to maybe some of the others in that area. And I would be also concerned about the building materials. I understand, you know, wanting to make a, a good home at a reasonable price, but how is that going to impact the, the current landowners and the current homeowners in that area? Is it going to have a detrimental effect on their property? So there are, there are several concerns that I have that I think just need like further clarification and like pinning down what is the, the true, you know, makeup of what this is going to look like.
I think the, I think on the, on the number of homes, I mean, it's 87. So a twin home, that would be one and two. So there's 87.
That's still two residents per, per that parcel, correct? A twin home is basically a townhome that's...
There's 87 deeds. Eighty-eight, excuse me.
Eighty-eight occupants.
Yeah, so there's 88 homes. It looks like some of them are going to be attached, but that is one home and two homes.
So it's...
So there's only 88 total homes.
If there's, if two of them are attached, that's two lots, two separate lots. So there's a grand total of 88, correct?
Correct.
Still, yeah, I mean, you've got your double cars, but again, the traffic issue is a, is a big thing for me. You know, I've lived on that road, my family's lived on that road for nearly 20 years now. The traffic's just getting worse and worse and worse. And now we're just going to add that many more vehicles to the issue. And I think it truly needs to be addressed.
We'll have the applicant address your questions when they come back.
Appreciate the input from the commissioners, but the answer is, um, it can be no more than 88 family homes there. Some homes will have a, what we call a zero lot line and they'll touch, but it won't be any more than 88 there. And so that gives us the infrastructure of, of the density of 4.36. If Commissioner Clark asked for maybe a short recess in, if they, you wanted to take that, we might take that as the opportunity to address the building materials and we'll come up with a proposal for that because we'll be glad to do that and I think that's well taken.
Take a short break?
Five minutes solid, I'd take, yes.
The City County Planning Commissioners come back to order? Mr. Alcott?
Um, thank you for the brief recess. I appreciate the accommodation commissioners and chair. Um, here's the proposal from the builder. If you look at, um, DPC number nine. Um, our proposal to, instead of worrying about percentages, we're just going to take off split face block completely. And so all foundations will be brick, stucco or stone, so masonry products. And then we suggest after that, put comma after stone. As, um, Mr. Moore's sitting here, um, writing it down, I'll try to, to be, um, methodical and make sure he likes it. And front facades shall have at least 25% masonry products. Additional to, to nine following stone.
Excuse me, Mark. Can we negotiate to 30?
Yes.
It's a more customary, it's a more customary amount.
Okay. You guys are in the industry. I'm the lawyer. It's 30%, sounds great. Shall be masonry products.
Front facade.
Front facade. So my basic understanding that could be bricks, stucco, stone, hardy board, those type of things. For the record, um, Mr. Wheat, would you agree to the changes we just proposed in, um, development plan? You'll need to speak in the microphone, number nine.
Yes, yes, I do.
And then briefly, there was a discussion over, um, that it is a, can be a troublesome spot in regard to pulling in, pulling out. And that's the main reason why we agreed to do the stacking lane. And however, there is a, is a rise in the, there, and that's going to be the open space. And so it's not going to be a building there to block any view. And so, um, I'm going to let, uh, Mr. Wheat state how they're planning on helping that situation there. Because there are three driveways, two churches and then this development in between, that they're going to try to make it a better, um, opening.
Currently, when you, when you come in this entrance right here, it's, it's immediate grade going up that creates some of that blind spot. What we're going to do, there's an existing dwelling there now, it will ultimately come down. And that hill, if you will, will be cut down so the blind, to eliminate a portion, if not all, of that blind spot.
Any other questions from the commissioners or the chair tonight? Thank you for your time.
Mark, can I ask one more question? Did you all talk to anyone about a possible stoplight there?
Stoplight was not mentioned, um, in our preliminary design, you know, plan with all the utilities. Uh, the main issues that we talked about were water. And this was what the Department of Transportation, um, Sarah Patton recommended that we do. And so there was no discussion of a like.
In the audience, do we have any other questions or opposition to this other than the one? Yes, ma'am.
I just want clarification. Y'all were talking about, um, decrease in the blind spot. The blind spot I'm talking about is the actual road. When you, when, when, at that driveway between the driveway for the house and the driveway for the, um, the Islamic Center, those sit on the top of that, that hill. Um, just like this morning, somebody was unloading something on the right side. They locked, they, uh, stopped the truck right there at the top of the hill. So I had to go to the left, there was no flagman out there. I had to go to the left and just hope to hell that nobody was coming, which somebody was, so I almost had a head on. Because you cannot see the other lane until you get to the very top of the hill. So the entrance, it, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the road itself. So I don't know how y'all are going to address that.
Mark. And she's right, we can't affect blue level road and, and we are to a point where we feel like there is an entrance there. We're not changing the entrance, moving the entrance, it is the entrance that is already on the property. And the Islamic Center has one adjacent there, literally side by side.
And you, the transportation department, when you make application, they have looked at line of sight.
I, I didn't ask there that question, but that is, this was discussed.
Might be a question for staff. That's a requirement, is it not?
It's not necessarily a requirement, but we do make sure that, uh, that's part of our traffic impact study requirement. Is that they either provide a traffic impact study or provide evidence that they have, uh, conversed with the appropriate transportation officials, in this case KYTC and Warren County Public Works.
So is it safe for us to assume that that has been addressed?
It has been addressed and all that was required by KYTC was the, uh, the right, I guess, turn, turn lane.
Yes, ma'am. Can you come to the mic, please, and state your name and?
I'm not opposed to this at all, other than.
Name and address?
Linda Thompson, 170 Belgium Court.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
Uh, it not only affects blue level road, it affects Russell Road, which in turn affects Memphis Junction, Old tram. They put apartments up here across from the minute mark. We've got so much traffic out there now, it takes 10 minutes to get out on the road. So it needs to be addressed for the Department of Transportation. So we just had a bad wreck there a couple of weeks ago. They said there's never been any wrecks out there. That's not true. There's been more than one. And they did build nice apartments up there. And if they're going to put four properties, four houses on one acre, that's a lot.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 2019-9, flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 and Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented at the, by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Action.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Madison? Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion's passed?
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 219-52Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report and to the changes in the conditions agreed to upon tonight. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, our request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am. Motion's passed, we shall move that forward. Our last case tonight is 2019-53ZBG. State of Frank T. Wheeler and Masad Elek have filed an application in Resona Portunate of tracts of land containing approximately 83.41 acres located at 6309 Russellville Road from agriculture to general business to RS1B, single-family residential, highway business, RM4 multi-family and LI Light Industry with a general development plan. And we'll hear this from Ms. Hurt.
Thank you, Chair Houston. I guess, uh, this is our last application of the year, so just thought I'd say thanks to everyone for being here all the other meetings this year. And, uh, we'll wrap things up this evening with this application. So, uh, to start out with, I will mention that you have two letters at your seat. Uh, those were extra items of information that were submitted after the packets were mailed out. These two letters express concerns relating to the historic Gladish Asher House that is located on the property. And this property should look familiar because in September, this same property was before you for your consideration. Uh, there have been some changes proposed since the last hearing, including the addition of single-family residential uses. And the other zoning boundaries have shifted. Uh, we do have the exhibits from the previous application. If any of you all have questions about what has changed, we can definitely go over that in detail. But I will point out when we get to the rezoning exhibit, some of those changes here in just a second. The property is currently zoned agriculture and general business, and the current use of the property is also agriculture. The future land use designation for the property is mixed-use commercial. This category applies to strategic areas mostly undeveloped today that are located near designated industrial parks and accessible from major transportation corridors. These areas are envisioned as predominantly large-scale employment and business centers, albeit supplemented by compatible light, industrial, retail services, hotels and where appropriate, higher-density residential development, either standalone or in mixed-use developments. The distribution of land among these various activities shall be addressed through specific zoning. However, primary activities in these areas may include low and medium-rise office complexes, as well as environmentally friendly manufacturing and business centers. On large tracts, these uses should be encouraged to develop in a campus-like setting with quality architecture and generous connected open space to maximize value, promote. quality architecture and generous connected open space to maximize value, promote visual quality, and encourage pedestrian activity between employment areas and areas of supporting uses, such as retail, restaurants, and residential. The primary focus of this category is commercial mixed uses, with complementary residential comprising up to 50% of the contiguous area, and compatibility should be assessed by applying the policies in LU 113 in conjunction with the general development plan. I will also mention, in the staff report, there are a couple of typos. There are a few references to RS1D. The proposed zone for the single-family portion of the development is RS1B. So I apologize for that. If there are any references to RS1D, it should be RS1B. As we saw with the previous application, this property is also located within the boundary of the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. The entire property is within this boundary, and we will go over the applicable policies from the plan here in just a minute. I'll come back to the density map here in just a second. This is the rezoning exhibit that was submitted with the application. You can see the additional component of single-family, that's kind of this sage green color here, that's proposed to be rezoned to RS1B. Then you can see the dark red color here, that is a proposed area designated for RM4, which is multifamily development. There are highway business uses planned along Russellville Road here, in this purple-blue area, with light industrial uses situated behind the commercial development along Russellville Road, and also alongside of the RM4 multifamily portion of the development. Moving on to the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, you can see that the proposed layout of the development, again incorporates single-family residential homes here, along this portion of the development, those commercial out parcels along Russellville Road, industrial uses situated behind, with a balance of multifamily uses in between the industrial area and single-family area here. Under transportation infrastructure, again, the property fronts Russellville Road, and also has frontage on Stone Ridge Street, that's this street right here. And the applicants are also proposing a connection to Stonecrest Avenue, which is located up here closer to Russellville Road. Under water and wastewater adequacy, the property is served by Warren County Water District. The proposed development will have to be served with adequate water flow to meet the minimum fire protection requirements and adequate sewer facilities before any construction could commence on the property. This may require upgrades to existing infrastructure for both water and wastewater utilities. Under natural features, there are several groves of trees and mature tree lines located around the perimeter of the property, and the areas of the development proposed to be rezoned to RS1B, RM4, and light industrial. There are very few trees located within the HB portion of the development, and there are also several sinkholes located on the property. Under cultural or historical features, staff has noted that the Gladish Family Cemetery is located on the property. An old slave cemetery also is potentially located on the property. The existing home on the property, known as the Gladish Asher House, was constructed in approximately 1844. Although eligible, the home is neither a locally designated historic site nor listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants did not address the existing, the existing historic home as a part of this application. Under surrounding density, I'll jump back to the density map. Density is in the area ranged from 0.27 to 16.76 dwelling units per acre, as shown on this map. The proposed density for the RS1B portion of the development is 2.89 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density for the RM4 portion of the development is 22.94 dwelling units per acre. Under surrounding architectural features, staff has noted that the majority of the surrounding area is comprised of one- and two-story single-family homes, as well as two-story agricultural buildings. There are also taller buildings located in the South Central Kentucky Industrial Park. Under building materials review, staff has noted that the existing residence on the property is comprised mainly of vinyl. Restrictions for the adjacent and nearby subdivisions, including Stonecrest, Weatherstone, and Springwater, require that all structures be constructed of brick, stone, vinyl siding, or other modern materials. Under building orientation, staff suggests that any new structures on the property be oriented toward Russellville Road or the newly proposed internal streets. The preliminary development plan depicts that the homes in the RS1B portion of the development and the proposed clubhouse, let me jump back to that really quick, and that the proposed clubhouse will be oriented to face the proposed internal streets. You can see, this is the proposed clubhouse here, within the multifamily portion of the development. Again, the single-family homes are down here, or there are some other items I'll get to regarding building orientation, just, just in a second, in the development plan conditions. Next, signage. The applicants did address signage in the development plan conditions, and I will go over that more specifically when we get to the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan policies. Landscaping and screening will adhere to the zoning ordinance requirements for vehicle use areas and incompatible land use buffers. There's also some additional buffering that the applicants have committed to in the development plan conditions. Under connectivity, a stub-street connection to Stone Ridge Street, again, that's this street right here, is required by the subdivision regulations and is also supported by TR 2.1 outlined in the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan. The preliminary development plan submitted by the applicants, as I stated previously, also proposes a connection here with Stonecrest Avenue. Under pedestrian and bicycle facilities, the subdivision regulations require that sidewalks be installed for the residential and commercial portions of the proposed development. The applicants have committed to additional pedestrian facilities in the development plan conditions, which I'll go over in just a second. Moving along to the area-specific policy review, the staff evaluated 13 applicable policies. I will go through those. First, WV1A, which looks at infrastructure, including curb, gutter, and sidewalks, and that all utility lines should be placed underground. The proposal does comply with this policy. WV1B, which looks at location of parking and traffic circulation, we'll see, when we get to the development plan conditions here in just a second, that the application also complies with this policy. WV1C, any project should be designed and developed in a manner that will not impair the reasonable long-term use of nearby properties in fulfillment of the land use policies of this focal point plan and the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission should determine compliance with this policy. WV2A, residential development should be compatible with adjacent land uses. New development should not exceed the overall density of adjacent development by more than 50%. I'll jump back to the density map. The proposed density, as I mentioned earlier, for the RS1B portion of the development is 2.89 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for the RM4 portion is 22.94 dwelling units per acre. The density of Stonecrest subdivision is 1.25 dwelling units per acre. The proposed densities for both the single and multifamily portions of the development exceed Stonecrest by more than 50%. Density is in the area ranged from 0.27 to 16.76 dwelling units per acre. The Planning Commission should determine compliance with this policy. WV2B, which looks at visual interest in building elevations, the application complies with a portion, or, sorry, with this policy. And then, moving along to WV2C, which we looked at in the previous application also, that states that no more than 25% of residences should utilize front-loaded garages, and that the garage portion of any house or structure should have staggered alignment extending beyond the front building line of the house or recessed back from the front building line of the house. Looking back at the preliminary development plan, you can see that all of the residences are proposed to utilize front-loaded garages, and that the proposal would not comply with the portion of WV2C relating to front-loaded garages. The applicants did agree in their development plan conditions to adhere to the staggering elements, or the staggering alignments mentioned in this policy, and does comply with that portion. Excuse me. WV2E looks at open space, and the proposal does comply with this policy. WV2F prohibits, thank you, prohibits direct access to the proposed street, now known as the Southwest Parkway, or to Russellville Road, and the proposal does comply with this policy. Next, WV2H looks at property management for multifamily uses. The proposal complies with this policy. WV3A, to ensure the quality of commercial development in the focal point, minimal acceptable design standards should be established. All building exterior facades and materials should be reviewed by a committee of professionals, such as architects, planners, and others. The Planning Commission should determine compliance with this policy. WV3B, commercial zoning should be limited to planned unit development, office and professional neighborhood business, and general business. The proposal includes highway business and light industrial, and does not comply with this policy. Excuse me. WV3C looks at signage. To ensure visual compatibility and suitability in all commercial zoning districts, signage should be limited to two signs, one freestanding and one wall sign per property. Any freestanding sign should be ground-mounted monument-style with proper landscaping. The sign should be set back from the roadside triangle, as to prohibit obstruction of view. Freestanding pole signs must be prohibited, and the rest references planned unit developments, except for the last sentence, which states that billboards and temporary signs should be prohibited within the focal point. The applicants did agree in the development plan conditions to limit signage on the property to two signs, one freestanding and one wall sign, and they've also agreed that freestanding signs should be ground-mounted monument-style with proper landscaping, set back from the roadside triangle, and that no pole signs, billboards, or temporary signs shall be allowed. The proposal does comply with this policy. I will note back on page three, under the signage section, just for reference, that the zoning ordinance permits freestanding signage in the highway business and light industrial zones up to 30 feet in height, with a maximum sign-face area of 150 square feet in the highway business zone and 100 square feet in the light industrial zone. Staff has noted that there is very little freestanding signage in the vicinity, and that the existing freestanding signage is much shorter in height and contains less square footage than the maximums permitted in the zoning ordinance. Recently permitted freestanding signage in the vicinity includes the Huck sign, which is 20 feet in height with 95 square feet of sign-face area, and the Warren County Extension Office sign, which is 10 and 1/2 feet in height, and contains just under 60 square feet of sign-face area. Moving back to page six, the last Walnut Valley policy is WV3D, which looks at lighting. The zoning ordinance outlines specific requirements for lighting, and, and so therefore the development would have to comply with this policy. We've included a compliance summary for your reference on page six. The proposal complies with eight policies and a portion of another. The proposal does not comply with one policy and a portion of another policy, and compliance of three of the policies should be determined by the Planning Commission. Next, we have a reference to a traffic impact study requirement, which comes from section 314 of the zoning ordinance. This section outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study and states that exceptions to this requirement may be approved after consultation between the applicant and affected agency. And when a project's traffic impact can clearly be anticipated without a study, and all of the parties involved, including the transportation agencies and the applicant, are able to agree on an appropriate mitigation, a traffic impact study may not be necessary. The applicant must provide documentation and writing from all affected agencies, exempting their particular development from this requirement, along with a commitment in the form of a development plan condition, agreeing to all improvements required by such agencies. And on page seven, you'll see that the traffic impact study was waived by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet in lieu of the following improvements. One, the development will utilize a single entry point that has an existing median crossover with existing turn lanes. That's in reference to this access point right here. Next, the existing left turn lane may be required to be lengthened through the permit process. And last, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet may also require a signal warrant analysis through the permitting process. And the applicants did agree to these improvements in their development plan conditions. Moving on to the development plan conditions, in the interest of time, several of these are included in all sections of the development, so I'm going to try to only read them once and, and make reference to which portions of the development they're applicable to. So again, starting off, we're looking at the RS1B section of the development. That's this green area here. And number one actually applies to the entire development, so all four zoning designations. Number one, all service utility lines will be located underground. Number two, in reference to the RS1B portion of the development, the maximum number of residential lots shall be 35. Number three looks at building materials for both the RS1B and RM4 portions of the development. The exteriors of all residences shall be comprised of, at a minimum, 50% brick, stone, cement, board, or ephesus. No foundations shall have foundations of exposed split-face block or plain-face block. Number four applies to the entire development. The property shall be developed with uniform street lighting. Number five and six also apply to the entire development. Number five, the developer will properly address any sinkholes on the property, either utilize same or engineering the mitigation of same, consistent with applicable groundwater regulations. And number six, the developers shall coordinate with the cemetery board to locate the Gladish Family Cemetery and possibly a second cemetery that are believed to exist on the parent tract, and if found, shall thereafter preserve. Number seven applies to the highway business, that's the portion up along Russellville Road, RM4 and RS1B portions of the development, and the development shall include sidewalks on each side of the street. Number eight through 14 are only applicable to the RS1B portion of the, the development. Number eight, the single-family residential structures shall have a minimum of 1,400 square feet of heated and cooled living space, exclusive of garages and porches. Each single-family home shall include an attached garage. Number nine, all existing trees located on the property line adjacent to Stonecrest subdivision, that would be this property line here, this is the Stonecrest subdivision, which have a caliper of 10 inches or greater, and which are located within 10 feet of the property line, excluding any such trees that must be removed for the extensions of Stone Ridge Street and/or Stonecrest Avenue, as depicted on the preliminary development plan, will be maintained during development and construction on the property. Number 10, no construction traffic shall utilize Stone Ridge Street. Number 11, driveway placement shall be coordinated with and approved by the Bowling Green Public Works Department. 12, no single facade or elevation shall be repeated on adjacent lots or more than twice within the same block. Variation in exterior building material is encouraged. 13, the garage portion of any house structure shall have staggered alignment extending beyond the front building line of the house or recessed back from the front building line of the house. And number 14, development plan conditions 3, 8, 12, and 13 shall remain development plan, plan conditions only until a subdivision plat or separate declaration of restrictions is recorded with respect to the property, after which they shall no longer be development plan conditions. On page eight, we'll look at the development plan conditions for the RM4 portion of the development. We already touched on number one. Number two is actually applicable to the RM4 and the highway business and the light industrial portions of the development. The developers shall extend the left turn lane on Russellville Road and shall cooperate with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to conduct a signal warrant analysis in the future, if requested. Any additional access points in the future shall be coordinated with and approved by the City of Bowling Green Public Works. Number three is applicable to the RM4 and highway business portions of the development. No building shall exceed three stories in height. Number four, the first portion of number four is only applicable to the RM4 portion of the development. The total number of residential units shall not exceed 456. And then the second portion of that condition applies to the light industrial, highway business, and RM4 portion of the development, which states that the development shall contain a minimum of 20% open space. We already touched on number five. Number six, the development shall include amenities of a clubhouse and pool. Again, that's for the RM4 portion. Number nine is applicable to the RM4 highway business and light industrial portion. No construction traffic shall be allowed on Stone Ridge Street or Stonecrest Avenue. We already looked at 10. 11 and 12 are applicable only to RM4 portion. The property shall have no more than one managing entity for multifamily properties. Number 12, all existing trees located on the property line adjacent to Stonecrest subdivision and the property currently owned by Davis, which have a caliper of 10 inches or greater, and which are located within 10 feet of the property, will be maintained during development and construction on the property. So for the RM4 portion, that's referencing this property line here, in that area. We looked at 13 previously, and then 14 and 15 both apply to the RM4 portion, HB and LI portions of the development. four portion, HB and LI portions of the development. No less than fifty percent of all required parking shall be to the rear of the front building line. No parking shall be allowed within any required building setback line. Fifteen, open space areas shall be connected to open space areas in adjoining commercial and/or light industrial properties via sidewalks and/or walking trails. Versions of that same condition are on the other sets, which is basically saying that all three portions of the development will have interconnectivity for their pedestrian amenities. Moving on to the HB portion of the development, we've already looked at number one. Number two, the first portion we haven't touched on, let me jump back to the development plan. The property shall be accessed via a single entry point upon Russellville Road. Again, that's here. We've already covered the rest of that condition in previous sections and also looked at number three. So number four and five apply to the highway business portion of the development. All structures on lots adjacent to Russellville Road shall face Russellville Road, and all structures on lots not adjacent to Russellville Road shall face interior streets. Number five, no single family residential use on the property shall be allowed as of the date of rezoning approval from the City of Bowling Green. We already looked at number six. Number seven is applicable to the highway business and light industrial portion of the development. The following uses shall be prohibited: bingo parlor, pawn shop, tattoo parlor, adult entertainment, any sale, rental, or display of pornography or adult books, manufactured and mobile home sales, and above ground storage tanks. We already touched on eight, nine, and ten. Eleven applies to the highway business and light industrial portions. Signage shall be limited to two signs per property, one freestanding sign and one wall sign. Freestanding signs shall be ground mounted monument style with proper landscaping and shall be set back from the roadside triangle so as to prohibit obstruction of view. No pole signs, billboards, or temporary signs shall be allowed. We already looked at twelve and thirteen. Fourteen is only applicable to the highway business portion. The exteriors of all structures shall be comprised at a minimum of fifty percent brick, stone, cement, board, ephesus, or glass. All facades facing Russellville Road shall be comprised entirely of brick, stone, cement, board, ephesus, or glass. We already looked at fifteen. Sixteen, operating hours for any business operating on any parcel adjoining a residential use shall be limited to five AM to twelve AM, and we already looked at seventeen. Lastly, moving on to the LI portion, we've already covered one through seven and eight. So that leaves us with number nine. The property will be developed with a minimum of one sidewalk per each roadway, which shall connect to adjoining commercial and multifamily development. Number ten, all structures shall be oriented to face interior streets. And then we covered eleven and twelve. Thirteen, the development shall be buffered from any residential use by a privacy fence of six feet in height in addition to the vegetative buffer required in the applicable landscape ordinance. So that would be, let me jump back to the plan here, this area here where the light industrial and multifamily portions of the development adjoin. Fourteen, the developers shall make best efforts to preserve mature and healthy trees not existing in building envelopes, parking areas, or roadways, and to incorporate said mature and healthy trees into open space. And we already looked at fifteen. Moving on to the Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated twenty-eight items. Twelve of those we found to be in compliance. There were none that were out of compliance, and there were sixteen items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. The first being LU one one three, which looks at compatibility. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, LU two and LU two point one, which looks at quality of development and character of the area. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. Next, LU two five three, which looks at redevelopment opportunities. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is an opportunity for redevelopment. Next, NCR two point two, NCR two point four, NCR two point five, and NCR two point five point three. The applicants did agree to coordinate with the cemetery board to locate the Gladys Family Cemetery and possibly a second cemetery. But the applicants did not address the Gladys Asher House, which is believed to be demolished or planned to be demolished if this application is approved, so the planning commission should determine compliance with these items. LU two five two, HN one point two, which look at compatibility of infill development. The planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, NCR two four one, which looks at infrastructure and development pressure. The planning commission should determine compliance with this item as the proposal is located in an area where infrastructure already exists but may require improvements before development of the property can occur. The planning commission should also determine if the proposal will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. Next, HN one and HN one point three. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve existing character and pattern of development within the area and if it will strengthen nearby neighborhoods. Next, HN two point one and HN four. The planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing types, and if the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. And finally, ED one. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will help to diversify the local economy and strengthen core industries. And last, I'm going to jump back to page one and look at the points to consider. First, the proposed RS one B, RM four, HB, and LI zones are consistent with the future land use map and mixed use commercial category. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions noted relating to the preservation of the existing historic home located on the property. Three, the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, with exceptions noted relating to building height and building That's one thing I actually didn't mention. So under building height, one thing that was not addressed by the applicants was the building height in the light industrial portion of the development. And then finally, the, oh, and building materials also for the light industrial portion of the development. And then finally, the planning commission should determine compliance with the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan and if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. I know that was a long staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner, we're off quiet.
I think what we need to hear from the applicant on WV two C, on the residential section of it, no more than twenty-five percent of the units should utilize front loaded garages, and all of them are a hundred percent front loaded.
Alrighty, I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Houston, members of the commission, Chris Davenport, here on behalf of Mr. Alec, who is the contract vendor, and also the Wheeler family, who is represented by Mrs. Vicky Harris, who is here tonight. Right to your point, Commissioner Warren, about this twenty-five percent front end loaded. To that point, Mr. Moore, I'd like to make sure that the minutes of this hearing contain the staff report from the last application. That would be two thousand nineteen oh nine Flume and two thousand nineteen fifty-two ZCO. And the reason I want to do that, Mr. Warren, is I want to point out that very last application you had also did not contain that restriction. If you remember, there was a portion of that development that was in this focal point. The majority of that development was not. But of the restrictions they agreed to, they agreed to the staggered garages. They agreed, I don't remember if they agreed to the exterior finishes, but they did not have that limit of twenty-five percent front load garage either.
I had that, Chris.
But no, sir, that passed. That was the Flume application by Mr. Alcott and the subsequent.
You're talking about the one we just heard.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Warren. Not the last time we were here on this subject, proper. The very last hearing that we just had tonight was within this focal point and did not comply with that policy either. So that's why I've asked for those to be included.
I understand. Thank you.
And to that point, Commissioner Warren, and I'll ask Ms. Hurt to provide this information. I had the same question that you had about this specific policy within this focal point and how often that is complied with, frankly. So I had, I asked Ms. Hurt and the staff to look at the subdivisions that have been rezoned since the implementation of the focal point nineteen ninety-nine. And what she found, and I'll say this, and I ask her if I say this correctly, but according to what they provided, there have been five subdivisions, single family, rezoned in the Walnut Valley focal points since nineteen ninety-nine. Only one of them complied with that restriction. So I think that is poignant to point out. We complied with all those other things, the setbacks and the staggered, the materials. The only, and I'll say this, I say we complied. Obviously, we have, we've got a request for highway business. We got a request for light industrial. That's also a Walnut Valley focal point. I asked her to also, if she would, provide me information with how many properties in the Walnut Valley focal point don't comply with that policy. And according to information she gave me on light industrial, there currently are five lots that comprise seventeen point four eight acres of light industrial. There are six lots of three hundred and forty acres of high industrial. There are fourteen lots comprising fifty point five acres of highway business. So the reason, and Ms. Hurt, is my math correct?
I think maybe my table that I provided you with is a little confusing. The total is actually the total for the properties rezoned pre and post Walnut Valley.
As we sit here today.
But the number of highway business properties that existed, you're talking about total, not.
As we sit here today.
Yes, that's correct.
Those numbers are correct.
Yes.
Now, the highway business, there have been two rezonings since the focal point went into place where this body passed those rezonings. There has been one rezoning of light industrial, and there have been two rezonings of high industrial that comprise all those three hundred and forty acres of high industrial properties. So I don't want to beat up on the Walnut Valley focal point. We have done our best to comply with it. The reason I want to point those numbers out is that we're not alone in that. There are significant numbers of properties within that focal point that have been approved that did not comport with the only two policies we're not compliant with.
Chris, to speak more directly to that garage policy, one was front loading, but the other was staggered. Is it my understanding that, and in the previous application, they agreed to staggered?
The previous application, Commissioner Graham, there was no single family residential property at all, and I'm on.
Talking about tonight here.
I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. The one tonight, that's okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Graham.
So there were two components to that. One was staggered, correct? One was front facing. They complied with staggered, not front facing.
Correct.
And so.
And we're doing likewise.
And so you are committing to staggered.
Correct.
Correct? Just not the front facing.
Correct.
So you'll have a portion of that in compliance and a portion of it out.
Just like the one that passed tonight. Yes, sir. And I would point out, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe of those four subdivisions of the five that don't have the front loaded restriction, there's at least one that doesn't have any restriction of either staggered or the elevation issues.
That's correct. One out of the five that have been considered by the planning commission since the plan was adopted does not have restrictions on any of those items.
Majority of them have the staggered restriction, but not the front loaded garage restriction, just like us. And only one has the front ended restriction.
Correct.
Okay.
Just can we talk about, you let me know when you're ready to get to the GDPs and.
I will, but before I do that, I do want to advise the commission of one thing. Throughout this week, I've been in contact with representatives of Stonecrest. And as of tonight, we've made some concessions that I'm getting ready to go over, that I'm told that a representative of their subdivision will come up and say they don't oppose the application as amended. That's what's been relayed to me, and I've been told Ms. Ashley Burnett's going to do that. So what I would like to do, I wanted to get that information from Ms. Hurt, which I've got, thank you for bringing that. I'd like to make those changes. I would like to briefly state how we're different than we were in September, and then I'll let it go from there if I might. So, Mr. Moore, the changes that we have agreed to with representatives of Stonecrest, if we look at RS one B, and commission members, I'm on page seven of forty-three. On number two, we would amend that to thirty lots. I'm going to replace number nine with deals with, it deals with some buffering within ten feet along the property line there. We had set out that we were going to preserve anything with ten inches or more of caliper, and what the neighborhood has requested is this, and it's rather long.
So we're completely replacing nine and we're going.
But it will mirror it. It's delaying, it just, I think it's easier to replace it than try to make it work. The developer shall not disturb vegetation within ten feet of property line common with properties currently zoned, single family, excluding any such vegetation that must be removed for the extensions of Stone Ridge Street and/or Stonecrest Avenue, as depicted on the preliminary development plan. Let me tell you what the change is there. We submitted a buffering of trees that are ten feet, or excuse me, ten inches or wider. The neighborhood said, we really want that entire fence row. There are blackberry bushes, there are different things in that ten feet. We kind of like that. So we changed the nature of what we're preserving. We're just going to preserve all of that, whatever vegetation's in that ten feet. On the RM four DPCs, and that's on page eight, will have a new, number sixteen, that will read, no multifamily structure shall be constructed within seventy-five feet of any property line common with currently zoned, single family property. And I tell you, that's only going to apply to one property. But it's this corner lot, I think that's actually Ms. Burnett's lot, who I spoke of earlier. And so we're not going to build any multifamily structure within seventy-five feet of that property line. On number twelve, we're going to replace twelve, just like we did on number nine on the RS one B, and it will read, developer shall not disturb vegetation within ten feet of property line common with currently zoned, single family property. Again, they wanted that as opposed to the ten inch caliper situation. Oh, I'm not finished with twelve. Twelve will go on to read, the developer shall preserve trees within forty feet of property line common with currently zoned, single family property. That again is addressing this corner lot. So what they've asked for and what my clients have agreed to is, we're not going to build a multifamily structure within seventy-five feet, and we're going to preserve the trees within forty feet. So, I mean, just to, and I think Rachel, I don't know if you can state this, but I am told that the vegetation there is very dense, that there's a strong grow of trees in that area.
Yeah, it's on the aerial. If you want to flip back, you can see that existing vegetation if you go back a few slides. I think you're going forward.
I always go the wrong way.
There we go.
So with those, in a moment, I would ask Mrs. Burnett to come up here and, I guess, recognize that I'm not misleading anyone. We've met, and those were the concessions that they were agreeable with. There was a lot of compromise. I appreciate them reaching out to me this week and doing that. I've just, let me just highlight the differences here if I might, and I know it's late, but obviously it's a very important application for my clients. First and foremost, our application tonight includes the RS one B. The previous application, it's going to be at the end, isn't it? So in this previous concept plan, this is the existing neighborhood. this is the existing neighborhood. Okay? I believe that was RM4. Is that right, Ben? That, this was HB? But, but the, frankly, what we're really, what we really try to change in this plan is this was a light industrial properties that bordered that neighborhood. And so, when we were here in September, what we heard, and, and just to take you back real quick, we brought this first on September fifth. And on September fifth, the neighborhood showed up and said they wanted to talk to us about this, so we tabled it two weeks. Uh, they had some difficulty getting representation, not their, not their fault, but we weren't able to have any meaningful discussions in two weeks. So when we came back on the nineteenth of September, they voiced these concerns, primarily the light industrial bordering their property. So, uh, obviously, that request was denied, and my clients went back to the drawing board. And they looked to see what they could do to address those concerns. And first and foremost, is the single-family that they, that they've proposed now. Uh, they, and you can see the difference, in, in the first plan, the light industrial properties were all the way up into here. So we've got them well into the interior of, of the project. This rezoning cost for eighty, almost four acres. I think the rezoning September was seventy-three. So they've had to add acreage to the plan to create additional buffering to the single-family residents. Uh, other changes we made, uh, along the way, we've, uh, increased the sidewalks that we're putting in, which I think is advisable for everyone. The RS1B will have dual sidewalks, both sides of the street. Uh, those sidewalks will not connect with either the RM4, the commercial properties, or the industrial properties. Again, the feedback we got, that was preferred. We really want to kinda segregate the single-family, uh, from the other parts of the development. However, the multifamily, the commercial, and the LI, uh, sidewalks will all connect. Uh, staff, uh, their point, and we agree, we want folks living in the multifamily to be able to access the commercial properties, and, and hopefully, they're working in the industrial properties. We've committed to twenty percent open space. We've committed that those open spaces in the, uh, multifamily, commercial, and LI properties will be connected by sidewalks and/or walking trails. So those will be accessible to both the residents in the multifamily, the employees, and, and whatnot in the industrial. What, you know, it's not, it's not a change because we didn't have single-family in the first project, but with this project, our single-family has, uh, brick foundations. It's got fifty percent brick. Even the multifamily's fifty percent brick. I'll tell you, we, we modeled that after the southern development, which is off Nashville Road. So, basically, we tried to hit all those points. And we tried to listen to the concerns of the neighbors and try to buffer that current subdivision from the industrial properties. I will reiterate that this area, in my opinion, is prime for industrial properties. It, it's bordered by industrial property up here. We've got the southern parkway in the back, which the right-of-way has been purchased. The funds to build out, that has not, that's not been allocated yet, but at some point in time, this will be built. And at some point in time, uh, this, I would anticipate, will have industrial use, just like the property to the north of it. So, you know, a lot of times, we're, we're, we have a relatively small development that we're trying to make work. When you have this kinda acreage, at least you can go from the single-family to the multifamily, to the commercial, to the industrial. And looking back, that was the problem in September. Uh, we weren't affording that to the neighbors. And we're doing that with this application. So, um, I hope I haven't, um, misstayed. The, the requests were made of me, and I would invite Ms. Burnett, if I am telling the truth, if she wouldn't mind, uh-
I actually, I want to speak first.
Fair enough. I don't know, if y'all have any questions of me, I don't, uh, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What have they done about the cemetery, about locating it?
So, um, I forgot to mention this earlier. Mr. Lucas with Landmark's not here. Uh, Mr. Ritter's here, uh, my, Mr. Larkin-Ritter. He has been, uh, helping the developers in trying to move this forward, redoing some things. He's been assisting them. He's been on the property with Ms. Tanya, Tanya Colley. Uh, we, they've started that process. What the staff asked of my clients is reflected in the DPC, and that is to work with the cemetery board to find those cemeteries and preserve them. And they are committed to doing that. That's already begun. They know that there was, I think they found one headstone somewhere, Mr. Rich, so far, but that work's just started. So, um, I basically asked the staff, "What do you want me to commit to? What do you want my clients to commit to?" And that's what they advised. So, um, I hope that answers your question.
Could I answer my question? Yeah. Thank you.
What about this historic house? Is there any consideration to keeping that historic house?
It won't be preserved, Commissioner Clark.
Not at all?
It won't be, and, um, you know, what I would point out on that is that that is, that house has the potential to be designated possibly. It's not designated, okay? My understanding is any structure older than sixty years has the potential. And I'm not suggesting this is just a house of sixty years. But the other absolute fact is, the Wheeler family, if they wanted to demolish that house tomorrow, they could. So, when you hear historically significant, it's not on any type of preservation list. Uh, the type of work that has to be done to put it on that list has never been done. It's never been requested. So, uh, but to be frank, that, that house will not be consistent with the development. Thank you all.
Hi, Gary Chappin, one eighty-five Hearthstone Circle. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Houston, Chairman Houston, commissioners, thank you so much for this time. Uh, Mr. Davenport is correct. We did reach out to Mr. Davenport. Uh, was, we have not had a success with them reaching out to us, being the neighboring property owner, so we did decide that we would like to be good neighbors and reach out and offer some concessions. Uh, one thing, Mr. Davenport, that you did leave out in our earlier meeting that started at four-thirty was the house size. You have raised the commitment on the house size. So if we would please enter that into the minutes that you wanted to increase that to sixteen hundred and fifty square foot, is that correct?
So, the homes that are adjacent to, the lots adjacent to currently zoned, single-family, uh, properties will have no less than sixteen fifty heated cooled living space. Number eight. Yes.
So that's up from fourteen hundred?
Up from fourteen hundred.
Yes, it is.
And I'm not finished with that yet. Yeah. So, I would, and I think it should read like this. "Single-family residential structures on lots adjoining current, currently zoned, single-family properties shall have a minimum of sixteen fifty square feet heated slash cooled living space, exclusive of garages and porches." Period. "All other single-family residential structures shall have a minimum of fifteen hundred square feet heated slash cooled living space, comma, exclusive of garages slash porches. Each single-family home shall include an attached garage." So let me break that down. What that basically means is, the homes adjoining Stonecrest will have a minimum of sixteen fifty square feet. The other properties will have a minimum of fifteen hundred square feet. And I'm sorry, I neglected to say that.
That's why I'm here. Wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, like I said, we did reach out. He had covered some of the things that we, uh, they did concede to you. I would like to talk about some, maybe just a few of the things. You know, originally, we, what we had sent the email, we had asked, uh, for those residential homes to be comparable to our point-eight acre lots that we now, uh, enjoy in Stonecrest. Uh, so, part of that was because of the Walnut Valley, the V dash two A, I believe it was, but they did, they did give concessions as far as raising the square footage and lowering the number of lots. You did cover that, I did. So originally, they were looking at thirty-five, now to thirty. We were hoping for a few less, but we understand some things there. We did also, uh, ask originally for a hundred-foot setback on the, the RM4. Uh, then they agreed to seventy-five, so, uh, seventy-five was, was somewhat of a good, uh, a good trade-off for both of us, uh, and they were agreed to leave the trees. That is also in the, in the notes there as well. Uh, they did agree to the ten-foot, leaving ten-foot along. The one thing that we did ask, and I'm still, I, I heard you mention, I wanted some clarification. Uh, we did request not tying into Stone Ridge. Uh, I would like, is that actual, I think they have to tie into Stone Ridge? So that is a, that is a legal requirement that it has to be done?
For fire.
I'm sorry.
Fire.
For fire. Cause I know there's several, several different developments in town that do not have, they have one entrance, one exit, and I was just curious if, why that would be different on this situation.
It would only be a private development, correct? Everything else would have to have-
Right, the, the subdivision regulations, and I anticipated this question, so I copied exactly from, from the regulations. Under the stub-street section, it states that stub-streets or dedicate, dedicated easements are required as part of a continuing street plan to provide for access to any adjacent undeveloped tract of ten acres or larger. Likewise, connections to existing stub-streets in an adjacent development are required. And this is further supported in TR two point one from the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan that states that adjacent developments shall provide for internal circulation between them in accordance with the subdivision regulations. So that's where those, that requirement comes from.
Okay, cause, and, and we're kind of a unique situation. I'm sure it happens in other places. Our side of the fence roll is, is Warren County, and of course, their side's gonna be City of Bowling Green, so I'm just not sure how road upkeep, you know, if we're gonna increase the traffic on our Stone Ridge, uh, who's gonna, who's gonna be responsible for taking care of that? And that's one of the reasons I'm asking, because, of course, we don't see a lot of, of help on, on road maintenance as it is in subdivisions. So, just wanna make sure with the added traffic, it's gonna create some issues for us there. The, uh, of course, the other thing we asked for is, you know, wherever they're connecting, we are fine with them connecting up front at Stone, uh, at the top side up there. I believe that is Stonecrest, is that right? But, uh, definitely needs, gonna have to be reworked. That's a, a bad situation for us even now, coming in and out. And, uh, so there definitely have to be some rework. The actual turning lane for us turning left off of sixty-eight is not currently long enough. So now you're adding an extra several vehicles and so forth. Uh, we did ask for no structure to be taller than two stories. That's one thing they did not give on. Uh, that's one thing I think that you, as, as the commission, will have to decide if it, if what they're asking for does meet and, uh, is a, is approvable by, by your regulations and codes. But, uh, right now, that's, that's all I currently have. I thank you for your time. Appreciate it. And, uh, I've asked my colleagues, did any of you guys that are here for us, any other questions? Anything I didn't cover? Oh, uh, Mr. Faust would like one of those commercial lots to be a Chick-fil-A if any way possible, so.
All the ones that the entire chamber could agree on.
And he just, I just realized how hungry I was when he said that. Ain't nothing from, we good? Everything? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the flooding, uh, of course, yeah, the, the flooding part of it has definitely, uh, been a concern. It was the first time we were here back in September. Uh, we understand that Landmark, if they are the civil engineer, will have to address that. Uh, I do would like, I know Mr., I talked to Larkin here a while ago. I don't know that he's still here, but, uh, you know, definitely would like him to take, uh, Greg Gary's input on that, who developed Stonecrest. Uh, Greg actually had to build our water retention one and a half times larger than what was required, because we have underground water, underground river. So water actually comes up before it goes out, and we're directly tied into that line of sinkholes that are on the Wheeler farm. So that's definitely an issue. Uh, we don't wanna see any lawsuits down the road. If, we just wanna make sure that that is addressed and addressed correctly. Good? All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any concern or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Stephanie Morris. I live at thirteen twenty-one Elizabeth Street. And, um, I'm here as-
Want to tell the truth?
Oh, I'm, I promised to tell the truth, sorry. Forgot the most important part. I'm here as president of Landmark Association. And, um, I know that all of you, I think, got a letter from Gray Cottle about, uh, his concerns, um, about the home on the property. And, um, I'm sorry, I let this, I just didn't know about the meeting until, didn't even know about this until today, so I'm sorry to be late with this. Uh, but I went to look at the house today and took some pictures. It's, it's a really wonderful house, and there's a beautiful stone fence out front. And, um, I just want, and Gray, uh, shared with me his letter. And since he's, um, on the Historic Preservation Board, I know that he did his homework, and I didn't have time to do mine. So just for the public record, I would like to, um, just reiterate his concerns, because I have the same concerns. And, um, I'm going to read, because I will go faster if I read, and I know it's late. So I would just like to, uh, point out that, um, the house is eligible to be on the National Register of Historic Places. And in nineteen seventy-eight, the Kentucky Heritage Council listed this house in the Historic Resources Inventory. Also, the house was intentionally spared from demolition in nineteen eighty-six when US sixty-eight eighty was widened. This was due to the fact that the house was listed as historically significant and worth preserving in the Cultural Historic Report, um, US sixty-eight eighty, Warren County, Logan Counties, a document produced by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's Division of Environmental Analysis. And this analysis was done by a senior historian for the division named Jane Henderson, whose work sought to identify historic structures and the path of the widening of the road and, um, those structures that need to be preserved. So the highway, uh, the highway's course was altered so as to preserve this home. And so the Transportation Department, the State Highway Department, thought it was worth preserving. I'd also like to point out that it was built in eighteen forty-four. We don't have very many houses like that, and so, um, and I think they're, they're, they're a resource, and they're part of our history, part of Bowling Green's history. Um, also, I'd like to point out, um, as Gray has to you, that the 2030 Comprehensive Focus Plan, um, addresses historic preservation. And the plan states, "Bowling Green and Warren County continue to lose their historic quality through neglect, demolition, or improper alteration of the historic structure or its setting." And some of the plan's goals are to preserve significant elements of Warren County's historic agricultural, architectural, and archaeological heritage, and to promote the economic viability and vitality of historic neighborhoods, historic districts, and rural landscapes, adjusting local government decision-making processes as necessary to adequately consider cultural resources and historic preservation. I don't know if, if that's true in this case, that, um, that in this decision-making process about the building, that, uh, the commission has adequately considered the cultural resources and historic preservation of this home. And so, um, so that's, I mean, I'm, I'm just here to say that, um, I think it's important that we preserve our heritage and our, well, preserve homes. And eighteen forty-four, um, was a long time ago, and that house, um- our, well, preserve homes, and eighteen-forty-four, um, was a long time ago, and that house, um, is, is a structure, I, I've talked to other members of Landmark Association who are also concerned, um, one mentioned how the building might be able to be moved at not too, not too much of a cost, and that the stone fence could also be moved, um, so, just, um, just would like you to, um, uh, one of the first things that I heard in the report that you read, you said something about quality architecture, well, it's there. It was built in eighteen-forty-four, so I'd just like you to consider that, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I take the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, document number twenty-nineteen fifty-three-ZBG, based upon the testimony and documents presented at this, in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in this staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the co, with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include summary of evidence and testimony for the amount witnessed this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion passed with opposition, we shall move this forward. Thank you. We have one new item to discuss. Uh, if y'all, we, we, we're still in session, we have something, if you just hold it down a little? Mr. Peterson will present our fee schedule?
Yeah, I'll just do it from here. Um, so you have the fee schedule in front of you, that we have some proposed changes, uh, too, um, so, uh, these would be effective proposed January first, 2020. Um, the fee, uh, we talked about this previously in, in a couple of meetings, where we have removed the requirement to advertise site development plans, uh, and, uh, plats in the newspapers, so we have, able to reduce some of our fees. Uh, so we're proposing to reduce the site development plan, uh, fee from two-twenty-five to two-hundred. Uh, we are proposing to, um, reduce, um, our subdivision, uh, applications, as well, as you can see, kind of on, uh, I guess I'll call it the backside of the, uh, the page, from, uh, four-hundred-and-ninety-five to se, four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for a, uh, public, uh, preliminary subdivision with public improvements. Uh, without public improvements, uh, reduce those fees from a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars to a hundred-and-fifty, uh, revision, just a subdivision revision, reduce those fees from a hundred-and-sixty-five to a hundred-and-fifty. And, uh, then I will transition into the increases, so we had to have some increases on our recording fees, essentially a state law was passed, uh, that upped all of the fees for every county clerk's office throughout the state of Kentucky, uh, those were significantly increased, uh, so basically, it's fifty dollars to record anything in the courthouse now, so, uh, we had to, uh, we had to adjust those, uh, adjust those fees to match that new state, uh, state law to pass those on, so that's what those fifty-dollar amounts are now, uh, on the recording and the subdivision plat review. Uh, and then on the, the front page, uh, we also adjusted that, of course, right-of-way recording fee and land use certificate fee to, uh, to match that fifty dollars, too. Um, one other slight adjustment for certificate appropriateness for just a staff review, those are items for, in the historic preservation realm, that staff has the ability to, uh, approve without going to the board, so we don't have to advertise them. In order to try to help encourage redevelopment of some of those areas, we have reduced, uh, reduced, uh, that fee to nothing, it's, it's just, we would take that and, and review that, there's no advertisement, so hopefully that would help, uh, owner of historic property be able to make changes and, uh, and hope, uh, reduce some, some of the red tape there. The other, uh, addition is, uh, under telecommunications towers, so cell towers is a new type of cellular communication, um, oh, it's hard to say tower, it could be on a tower, but they're small cells, they're basically boxes, some roughly about the size you would see a power transformer, and, uh, most of those are going in right-of-way, which we don't regulate, but we may have some that would be on private property, so, uh, we had to set that fee as, according to what the FCC allows us to charge for those, so it'd basically be five-hundred dollars per five structures, so you can, uh, charge five-hundred dollars for five, it'd be a thousand for ten, so on and so forth, so, that's the proposed changes, uh, be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, uh, we would need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, as submitted by Ben.
Ben, I have one question. The effective date of the changes on the second page, that also be January one?
Yeah, the whole, the whole document, it's a date wrong at the top. On the back? Yeah, we'll, we'll make that change. Thank you for catching that.
I just, I thought, I didn't know if that went into the section one.
We just missed that.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am. There's no other business for your...
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Mr. Peterson?